Good evening, the November 3, 2015 recess meeting, the regular meeting of the Mayor, Mord Alderman, now come to order. At this time, we have Alderman David Little and Alderman Scott Maynard joining us telephonically. Our mayor is out of town on official business. We now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance thereafter with our Father Vargas from St. Joseph to give us the prayer after the pledge and with the following moments of silence.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God of justice and mercy, thank you for the gift of life and for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Help us to speak with charity and restraint. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Guide us to be the leaders of your people and help us to see the humanity and dignity of those who disagree with us and to treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority is rightfully administered, laws are enacted, and judgment is decreed. Assist with your spirit the counsel of these officials. May they always seek the ways of righteousness, justice, and mercy. Great that they may be enabled by your powerful protection and lead our community with honesty and integrity. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen. We're now down to the full of official agenda. I think of the wind we have an amendment.
I do. At the request of Chief Nicholas, I have an agenda item that I'm requesting that we amend the agenda to reflect this, and I'm requesting that it be placed on the Board Business, Page 2, and add it as Item C under number 10. And it will reflect, our organization should change the wording on City Hall located at 101 Lampkin Street from Starkville City Hall to Police Department with this change as early as November 9, 2015.
Is there any objection to this amendment? Are there any other proposed amendments to the agenda? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the official agenda as revised.
Mayor. Part 10, I'd like to add, under Department Business.
Yes, sir.
Item C1 to consent.
I'm sorry, do what?
Item, under Item 11, Department Business C1, I'd like to add that's just to consent.
Okay, the item that Alderman 2 just added.
Item 10, I'm sorry, item 11, C1.
Item 11, C1, yes, sir.
Add that to consent, please.
Yes, sir. Is there any objection to this matter going to this action? Yes, sir.
Under Board Business, Item 10A, I'd like to add that to consent.
Objection, General 1.
I'd like to ask the question of Alderman from Ward 7, are you going to object to anything of consent tonight or just certain items?
Check this one.
Anything? Thank you, sir.
Okay, I entertain a motion to approve the official agenda as revised. They move? Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Alderman Carver to approve the official agenda as revised. Then second by Alderman, when a court will read for roll in discussion? No, sir. Any discussion, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the September 15, 2015. There's been a motion by Alderman Carver to approve the minutes of the September 15, 2015 meeting, the Mayor Board of Alderman, the City Attorney Incorporated, and all the changes recommended by the City Attorney, there's a second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Winn, is there any discussion? Any discussion, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
The motion clearly passes. We're now down to announcement, the comments. The first on the agenda is Mayor Pro Tempor comments. I'd like to just say very briefly and succinctly tonight that this is the last meeting of the Starkville Mayor Board of Alderman in this boardroom. I have been a member of this board since on about July 6, 1993. The first meeting of this board that I attended was on Tuesday, July 6, 1993, in this boardroom. I have attended meetings in this boardroom in excess of 22 years and approximately four months. In talking to the City Attorney, that translates into conservatively about 525 meetings that I have attended in this boardroom. I could conclude by saying, as we move forward to the City Hall, I will always have memories of the experiences, discussions, and decisions made in this boardroom. Thank you. Now, you have the floor to any of my colleagues who would like to be recognized for any comments. Alderman.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Ms. City clerk. Last time, and I joined our last board meeting, I actually forgot to recognize you and the ladies of your office for assisting us with the Mississippi Municipal League that was held on October 14th and 15th that our city hosted. It was a great experience to walk in and see some of our city personnel at the table for check-in. So, thank you so much, and I further want to thank the ladies of your department for assisting in the move. I know that it has been a very difficult time for the past couple of days that you all have been packing up, but I want to say thank you so much to you and your personnel. And I know that you and Ms. Kenesha have worked so diligently together as it relates to the furniture, so thank you so much. Next week, I will be sending over you all some Cinderella's, lovely, and they are from Mississippi State's former quarterback Tyson Lee and his wife. They have a little local business here, so I'm going to send over a pan of, two pans of those, there's some little mini muffins, so I hope that you all enjoy them when I send them to your new location next week. Now, on to the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, I just, you know, I want to pick on you just for a little bit. You've been here 22 years and you just say it, four months. On November 17, sometimes we do things out of habit, but I respectfully ask that you do not come down here by mistake to 101 East Lampkin Street. I am humbly asking that you please go to 101 East Nye Street to the new building. Did you hear me fine as well?
Yes, ma'am, I got it.
Again, sometimes we do things out of habit, and after 22 years, I don't want you down here. I want you up in the building.
Yes, ma'am.
So, again, I just want to say thank you so much, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman.
I'm certain that you've got wonderful stories that you'll share one day when you write your book, Blue Dog.
Thank you very much, Alderman, thank you.
I yield the floor at this time, thank you so much.
Do any of the, Alderman, have any comments? If not, we're down to citizen comments. Any citizen can come forward and speak for up to three minutes.
To the Mayor Board, my name is Alvin, in the two, Mayor in his absence, and Vice Mayor, in Alderman Vaughn and Alderman Walker. We have one in situations that if we do not come to grips, it will get worse. I have to be good because I have three police officers members of church, chief, officer body, officer, shoemaker, so I have to be good. The young people, we need, they need to understand that police officers are doing all the key. But if we do not have any police officers, what are we going to do with them? We have things that are happy, that is sad, and it really hurts. The people that voted to take that police officer, we seen the attack on the school buses. If you don't take the driver, you put the driver's life in danger while that student. We hoping that the young people get better because you have to do right, all right? You can't do wrong and get back. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Cory. Mr. Cory, Ward 4. I just wanted to come up for a moment and echo the Vice Mayor's comments regarding this building. It has certainly served Starkville well. This building was built, I believe, in the 1930s and was designed to be armored, so it was never designed to be used for the purpose that it was, and I think that that is a testament to Starkville's resourcefulness that we got as much use out of this building as we did. I just want you to know that I really hope that as you move into the new building, that it represents a new chapter in Starkville and that it serves you well. And I also hope when you do move that you will remember our PD and the building therein and continue to support them and eventually renovate this building as well. So, good luck.
Thank you, Alderman, thank you. Is there any other citizens who would like to have a comment? If not, there are no public appearances. We're now down to a public hearing, a second public hearing on the campus communication group grant chance agreement. First, I'll ask, does anyone with the board like to make any comments at this time about, as part of this public hearing? If there are no comments from anyone with the board, I'll, like, up to 15 minutes per side. I'll just start with anyone who wants to speak in favor of this agreement, to please come forward and speak up to three minutes, as part of the total 15 minutes. Anyone who wants to speak in favor of this agreement? Does anyone desire to speak against this agreement?
Yes, sir.
Please come forward. And give us your name and your address.
My name is Peter Cameron, I'm from Max Health Broadband.
Yes, sir.
First of all, thank you for being the moment here.
Yes, sir.
As I said, I'm Peter Cameron, I'm the CEO of Max Health Broadband. You're your legacy broadband operator here in the city of Starkville, been that way for many, many years. Although we come, we welcome any and all competition, we think it's a good idea to bring competition to the city, we're concerned a bit about the strategy that you're going after, primarily by taking and allowing broadband companies to what we call cherry pick various neighborhoods and selectively servicing just those areas as elite areas. We feel the long-term ramification of this is a huge disservice to your citizens. It's the eventual outcome in many of your neighborhoods will be the loss of access to advanced services such as digital services and broadband. As providers such as us will be unable to continue to service the whole city if our ongoing livelihood requires us to focus intensive capital to continue to compete in those few cherry picked areas. We just think cherry picking isn't the way to go. Moreover, we have broadband providers decided cherry pick neighborhoods within your community and community. Instead of superior competitive services and rates for your citizens you might think you're going to get, what generally happens in these cherry picked neighborhoods is these networks get stressed and undercapitalized because of the competitive rate conditions, and actually your residents ends up not getting the services that they thought they were going to get in the long term. Maybe a short-term solution, but not good in the long term. Max Health and our predecessors before us have always been required to service your entire community under your agreement between us to move and not allow the cherry picked neighborhoods based on demand. We're here for the whole city. We think our competition should be the same. We have paid millions of dollars to the city in franchise fees over the years, kept our commitments to the community, and more recently, under Max Health, we've built a new, we've doubled our employee base first, we've built a new service center here, we've launched a regional sports channel that covers all your local teams, and we've built a fiber to home network in record time that has over 7,500 of your homes here in Starkville, offering the highest internet speeds and the best prices in the nation, state of the art, all right? It should be noted that in twice the amount of that time, another broadband provider that has decided to cherry pick here in Starkville has picked those elite neighborhoods and built only half the homes during that same time, so it does show our commitment to you. Again, I stress again, we welcome competition, in fact, I encourage it, as for me as a business operator, it makes us a smarter company and also makes sure that we focus good service to your residents. I love competition. However, letting other broadband providers come in and cherry pick only what they consider those elite neighborhoods will eventually force us to demand the same conditions for our company. What that means in the end is residents that have been getting our service for a long time, residents that you represent, will lose out on service, not only will neighborhoods go underserved, but possibly not served, but jobs will also be lost, and also your franchise fees which you get from us will go down significantly if we're forced into that. In closing, I'm going to say again, as CEO of Max Health, we're committed to the city, always have been, our predecessors have been, we're proud to be here, all right, and we're proud to have the honor that you've led us to come here. But, in order for us to continue to fully and properly serve your community, we need to ensure the playing field is level for all broadband partners, all right? Right now, we're required to cover every single neighborhood, every single house, every single street. I'm happy to do it, proud to do it, but Max Health looks at it as a partnership that we've had for a long time between you and us. We respect it, we hope you guys will respect us. Thanks.
Yes, sir, let me say one thing, the mayor has, the mayor has asked that we not take any board action on this, and the mayor will ensure that this matter is on the agenda at our next meeting on November 17, 2015, so you're welcome to come back, the board will take up at that time, and the gentleman from 7. Yes, sir.
I've got one question. What neighborhoods are you saying are cherry picking?
Well, from what I understand, again, I'm not sure what Campus is after, but we've been told that they're going to be doing various vulcan, student units in various areas. I don't know the exact areas. I know Ceasefire, one of the other providers here, they've cherry picked and they've picked various neighborhoods that may seem to see as elite as well. Again, we have no problem with competition, the problem is we service those areas currently, you get our franchise fees for them. You know, and it doesn't matter if you have three competitors in there, those franchise fees, you can only get that customer at a time, all right, and whether you get that franchise fee from us or them, but we're committed to build this entire city, happy to do so. But when you let somebody else build just in the areas that they want to build in, it makes it very easy for them, very tough for us, but we're still committed to do it all, and we want to continue to do it all. Don't force us into a place where financially we can't do it. Now, we've been here a long time, we want to stay here.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Alderman calling in, please, sir. Alderman, you have the floor.
Can you clarify if Max Health contract requires them just provide cable TV coverage to the entire city, all of the cable TV coverage and top internet to the entire city? The last call was, you know, digital contracts, that Northland Cable and before that, that they were just required to provide TV cable coverage. Does that, does that question clear?
Alderman Maynard, this is Chris Latimer, and I'm looking at the Northland franchise agreement, of course dated back to 2006, that was assumed by Metro Cast and then assumed by Max Health when BCI came in and took over Metro Cast. And what it grants the right to do is to put in a complete quote cable system. And cable system is defined as a system of coaxial cables, optical fiber, or other transmission facilities, electrical conductors, and such ancillary receiving and processing equipment, and any and all other equipment necessary or convenient to, one, the transmission of television, radio, and any other lawful signals, and, two, the delivery of video programming, other programming, and related services not prohibited by federal law. So, Alderman Maynard, I think that definition is broad enough, unless Representative Max Health disagrees, to cover more than just regular old TV cable. We certainly look at it as that, yes.
Alderman Maynard, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alderman, when you have the floor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to say thank you so much. I acknowledge receiving your email, and I had it printed out, and I've read it more than one time, so I just want to say thank you so much for providing us the topic of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments during this public hearing?
Good evening, again, my name is Alvin, John. We don't have but a few jobs here to do, but if we start putting so many demands on the few jobs that's there, then we going to be in trouble. Yeah, but cable beer gets to be eight or ninety dollars, people just drop, drop, because they try to hold on, but then when you start having pressure put, it, all right, it makes the city no where to keep cable. All right, we have a few jobs, we need to try to keep the jobs that we have. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? If not, this public hearing is closed. The next item is Roman number 10, Board Business Item A, discussion consideration of an ordinance of the City of Starkville, motion by Alderman Carver to amend the ordinance designated meeting place of Starkville Board of Alderman. Second, Alderman Winn, is there any discussion? Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion clearly passes. The next item is discussion consideration of adoption, been a motion by Alderman Carver to approve a cover sheet template and process which all future gen items are submitted for the purpose of the template to provide informed process. I hear a second.
Second.
I've been second by Alderman Walker. Any discussion? Alderman.
I'm wondering, have we seen this template?
Yeah, it's the, here's from the packet, the template is the same thing we get every week, it's the one, that really hasn't changed. What's missing from the agenda is the process, and I believe that that can be shared, that has been and will be shared with the city staff, and basically what that process does is it goes under each one of those headings, subject, amount, and source of funding, and just delineates out how those need to be filled out in terms of where the funding's coming from and all that, so once it gets to us and to the public, we have a better idea that everybody's looking at it the same way.
So, it's a whole new pattern that you're doing?
Well, I don't think it's a new pattern, I think it's just sort of reinventing what we've already got, and I think the reason it's important is, one, we're moving to new facilities, we have a lot of new city staff that, in department level positions, that are going to be filling out this report or these cover sheets, and I think it will be advantageous for us, and if everybody had a little bit of training and knew what each one of those lines needed to be, so that when it comes to the city clerk and gets ready to put on the agenda, that we're all ready to go in on the same thing.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Alderman Maynard.
I'm in favor of this for a number of reasons, but one, it also requires that the front ahead doesn't make clear the individual funding for those items coming from those budgetary standpoint, it helps the outstanding industry as well to be able to track that.
Thank you, Alderman Maynard, any other discussion?
Vice Mayor, may I directly?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Vaughn, before we check in, I got my copy of people to see you.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. Call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yeah.
The next item on the agenda is going to be Roman number 10C, those amended table authorization to change the wording on City Hall located 101 Lampkin Street from Starkville City Hall to Police Department with this change as early as November 9, 2015, and per the City Attorney, we need to add subject to the approval, Mississippi Department of Archives and History. And Mr. Attorney, you want to just elaborate on that kind of real quick, we'll probably add that into their language.
Sure. Chief Nichols explained to us before the meeting denied that the Mississippi Department of Archives and History has to pass off on the lettering above the door, and they talked about fonts and sizing, and so they just want to make sure they bless that before it's official, so the city would be approving of this language pending their final go-ahead.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Yes.
Okay, you go ahead.
Move approval of the change of the wording on City Hall located at 101 Lampkin Street from Starkville City Hall to Police Department with this change as early as November 9, 2015.
And you, and subject to the approval, Mississippi Department of Archives?
Subject to the approval of Mississippi Department of Archives and History.
Is there a second?
Second.
The second, Alderman Carver, is there any discussion? Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is Department Business, Roman number 11, under planning, which is 2A, request approval, same move, Alderman Carver has moved approval of the Christian World Missions conditional use to have in place for worship in a C2 zone.
Second.
It's been second by Alderman Winn, is there any discussion? Before we get ready to take a vote, does anyone like to be heard on this conditional use? Would you please come to the table and give us your name and address?
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much, I'm Lee Ann Williamson, I'm the Executive Director of Christian World Missions. I've been a longtime resident of Starkville, Mississippi, and so you are my Alderman on the backside of town. My residential Alderman though is over here, and we, when I relocated to Starkville about five years ago, there on the north side of town, we recognized that we were at the apex of a crescent that was in the pocket of need in Starkville, and we turned our attention just from the international work that we've been doing for 40 years to the need right there in North Starkville, and for the last five years, we've been holding monthly outreach programs to identify needs in that community. Beginning this summer, we started a program for at-risk youth, and it has been very successful. Right now, we have 13 young people, half of whom have parents in prison, several of whom are orphans, and we are seeing great success with them helping with tutoring and that sort of thing. This is our primary objective in the program. The building has been used for a couple of different purposes, primarily to collect and refurbish equipment, hospital equipment to send overseas, and when that became no longer possible in 2001, after 9/11, we began to see the way that we could be more productive. When I came back here in 2009, it seemed that Starkville had a need right here, so we appreciate your consideration and hope that we can partner with you, so especially to reach that part of town, and thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sanders, it seemed like you desired to be heard, you come forward, Mr. Sanders, you want to be heard on this.
I just wanted to thank the board that, as this vice lady has stated, that the building has been used as for office use, and it is their desire as they've grown to use it for a place of worship and as a commercial use, and I'm here to answer any questions on which the board may have.
Mr. Sanders, was this public hearing properly noticed? Can you speak on that?
Yes, it was status 15, at least 15 days prior to this hearing.
And it's been before P and Z, what was the vote on P and Z?
It was unanimous.
Does anyone wish to have it heard on this, this matter? If not, clerk, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Winn.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
This, this motion passes. The next item on the agenda is request approval of HPM Development Car Dealership Landscape Way. There's been a motion by Alderman Carver to approve the HPM Development Car Dealership Landscape Way, we'll go here a second.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second. The second, Alderman, when? Is there any discussion?
Oh, the city attorney, would that carry those two requested conditions for waiver requests with that?
The conditions that are attached?
Yes.
Yes, there will.
The wording of that motion, does that include that? Or do I need to add?
To make it clear in the minutes, why don't you add that as part of the motion to expressly incorporate two conditions stated in the packet?
Yes, sir. That'd be part of the motion. Mr. Sanders.
Yes. I'm here to answer any questions that the board may have.
Okay. And the tree board, I understand the tree board--
They are recommending approval.
And any other discussion? None? Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is request approval of a contract with Canon Solutions America for One Canon Copy for the municipal court. I've been a motion, Alderman Little, to move approval. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second, Alderman Carver, to approve the contract with Canon Solutions America for One Canon Copy for the municipal court. Is there any discussion? If no discussion, clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard. Alderman--
Was that a yay, Alderman Maynard?
Yeah, yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is request approval to accept lowest investment from State of Construction-- Same move. There's been a motion by Alderman Carver to accept lowest investment from State of Construction to complete the Jackson Street sidewalk extension amount of $6,108, and the second by Alderman. Von, is there any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just have a question. Alderman Vaughn, where is this extension of this sidewalk?
It's coming, you know, where it's free, I'll store it.
Yep.
Where it's cut off before it gets free. It'll come from freedom, and I'll go back to 12.
Thanks, sir.
Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is request approval of this Storm Claim Document for all departments included. There's been a motion by Alderman Carver to approve this Storm Claim Document for all departments, including Starkville Electric Department, as of October 2015, fiscal year ended, 9/30. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second by Alderman, when? Is there any discussion on this matter? No discussion, clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
This motion passes. The next matter on the agenda, Discussion and Consideration of Authorizing the City Finance Director Mayor to Establish Separate Bank Accounts for the Waste Water Sewer Department, Sanitation Department, General City Airport, and Park Recovery Department from the pooled cash account. There's been a motion by Alderman Vaughn to establish these separate accounts as outlined on the agenda. Is there any discussion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman, when? Is there any discussion?
Yes. This is who authorized this? Ms. Harvey?
Uh, yes, sir. I spoke with-- Okay. I had a meeting last week with Watkinswood and Stafford representatives of the mayor and Terry Kemp, when he was there. We feel that it would be better for department heads, instead of having all of the money pooled into one account, to have the, especially the sanitation, the electric department and all, to have separate accounts, so they can get a clear view quickly of where exactly they stand.
Have we had any issues the way it's working now, or is this just a recommendation?
It's just a recommendation of just a, instead of having all of the money in one account, having it pooled in one bank account, one general ledger account, that we will have a clear view of what each department is actually--
Thank you. Yes, sir. Alderman.
So on these accounts, I'm assuming that authorization will, hopefully every check still will come through, clerk?
Yes, sir. Everything will operate the same.
Everything operates the same.
It's just that that way, if one of them starts having a cash crunch, so to speak, we'll know it quicker than at the end of the year when the auditors come in. And Watkinswood staffers said they had been recommending this for the last 10 years.
Alderman Carver.
Could we proceed with increasing staff or anything to maintain this? It was just pretty simple.
It's pretty simple.
Okay. Thank you.
It'll break it out on the financial statements for Alderman.
Thank you. No other discussion? Roll call, clerk.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. We're down to sanitation department, consideration of approving the lowest bid from cents-- Motion by Alderman Vaughn to approve lowest bid from cents on equipment for purchase of two new front loaders, garbage trucks, in amount of $595,000. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? Roll call, clerk. Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda, consideration of approving the lowest bid from Waste Zero for the purchase of 13,000 roll, 104 bags per roll of 1.5 mil garbage bags in amount of $155,870. Do I hear a motion?
Same move.
There's been a motion by Alderman, when, to approve the lowest bid from Waste Zero for purchase of 13,000 roll, 104 bags per roll of 1.5 mil garbage bags in amount of $155,870. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second, Alderman Vaughn, and we get support also from our budget chair. Thank you, gentlemen, from five. Any discussion? No discussion? Okay, gentleman, from one.
I was just wondering if you think that number coming in, $25,000 less than the first bid.
Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate those comments, Mr. Chairman. Thank you so much. Gentlemen, from one, want to be recognized?
Yes, ma'am. If you wouldn't have gained to come up, I just want to ask you a question, too. Questions that I get from constituents that I have to ask publicly, but this is the same mileage rate of this last bag we have, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then second, refresh my memory, what have any steps have we taken to start kind of phasing out? My concern is not the bag as a whole. I think there's certain individuals, not that, but as we move and phase into different kind of tipper bins and things like that, that some people we best are getting serviced by bags. I personally think that. What have any steps have we taken as a city to kind of maybe find ways to reduce waste? I know at times we talk about the voucher, you know, all that. Just refresh the public memory on that.
Well, the most recent decision the board made was to seek a proposal for the voucher system. That voucher system came in at 202, I think, roughly $1,000, which was $30,000 more than the quote that we received last year for your supply of bags. And it's also about $40,000 lower than what they did this year. So if the board makes a decision to go to tipper, then we'll start that process. If the board wants to go back and revisit the voucher process, the voucher system, then I'm quite sure the vendor would be more than happy to come to sit down and discuss the concerns that we had with the proposal.
So this year, they'll do delivery as usual?
Yes, this year, as soon as we can get the bags in. With this approval, what I'll do on tomorrow is we'll contact the vendor to see how soon we can get them in. The proposal, going out for the proposal on the other system, did push ours to February time back five months or so. So as soon as this is approved, we can get with the manufacturer, see how soon we can get them in. Hopefully, we can get them in. They did a 30-day bid, so hopefully we'll have them in by December, and we'll start them out by December.
In the future, I think we'd always need to strive to be more efficient in this one particular line item. I think oftentimes, maybe, my opinion, from what I hear from people, is if you go down like big apartment complexes, probably some possible theft there, or disappearance, mysterious disappearance, we'll call it, but there's any way we could streamline, you know, just to ensure that we didn't have the amount of seed theft we may have. That stuff, we never have to visit over that. But over the years, I'd like to see maybe this kind of purchase maybe lasts twice as long, you know, if we could find a way. We'll continue to work.
Thank you, Ms. Gandy.
Sandy, so we're talking about the next delivery of bags, potentially December?
Yes.
Are we, when was the last delivery of bags?
The last delivery of bags was December of last year. If you recall, that was for a nine-month supply.
Yeah.
And we started the voucher process of trying to get that quote in during the time that we would have been ordering bags.
And so for constituents that are currently out of bags, of which one called me today, and wanted to know when the next delivery was going to be, and I told her I would ask you that tonight, so we are tentatively hoping December?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
One last thing, Ms. Gandy, just to further stress that, of course, that's the schedule time, but you don't call that the company tomorrow?
Right.
And we get them sooner than December? We will.
We will.
Okay.
Right, but they did bid, and during the bid process, we asked for a delivery date, days to delivery, and their delivery time was 30 days. But we, I will make the call to see if that delivery date can be pushed up.
And hopefully we can get them sooner. Thank you, Ms. Gandy.
Hopefully we can.
Thank you. Thank you. Alderman, when?
Ms. Gandy, as soon as you find out, you receive those bags, can you provide all of us an email because the calls have already started coming with our trash bags? Yes, Alderman. Thank you so much, Ms. Gandy.
Please.
Any other discussion? No, clerk. Thank you, Ms. Gandy.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is consideration authorizing the board attorney to negotiate lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Do I hear a motion?
Same move.
There's a motion by Alderman, when, to authorize the board attorney to negotiate lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Is there a second?
Second.
The second by Alderman Walker, and is there any discussion? No discussion, clerk, please roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is request approval of Mr. Terry Kemp to attend TV PPA, TV CPC, and SAE meetings in Chattanooga-- Same move. There's been a motion by Alderman Carver, Mr. Terry Kemp, the Director of the Utility Department, to attend TV PPA, TV CPC, and SAE meetings in Chattanooga, Tennessee, November 9, 2015, or 10, 2014, 2015, with advanced travel. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. And this meeting is concluded. We're reassessed until November 17, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. in the municipal courtroom in New City Hall at 5:30 on Main Street. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second by Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. And this meeting is concluded. We're reassessed until November 17, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. in the municipal courtroom in New City Hall at 5:30 on Main Street. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Alderman. The motion passes. The next matter on the agenda is consideration authorizing the board attorney to negotiate a lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Do I hear a motion?
Same move.
There's a motion by Alderman, when, to authorize the board attorney to negotiate a lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Is there a second?
Same move.
The second by Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes. Thank you, Alderman. Thank you. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is consideration authorizing the board attorney to negotiate a lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Do I hear a motion?
Same move.
There's a motion by Alderman, when, to authorize the board attorney to negotiate a lease purchase agreement with Trustmark National Bank related to the purchase of a street sweeper and two front-end loaders to be used by the sanitation department. Is there a second?
Same move.
The second by Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? No discussion? Clerk, please roll call, please.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes, and this meeting is concluded. We're reassessed until November 17, 2015, at 5:30 p.m. in the municipal courtroom in New City Hall at 5:30 on Main Street. Do I hear a second?
Second.
The second, Alderman, when? Is there any discussion? Roll call, clerk.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman, when?
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Maynard.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
The motion passes, and this meeting is concluded. We're reassessed until November 17, 2015, at 5:30 in our new municipal courtroom in New City Hall at 5:30 on Main Street. Thank you. 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 Thank you.